Same for the pledge.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Did everyone get a chance to read last month's minutes?
Yes.
Yes.
You gonna get a motion to approve? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Mara's not here yet, we'll skip that. The eclipse, was that somebody that was supposed to be here too?
No, that's me.
Okay, go for it.
The guys and I have been talking about the eclipse day and was wondering if you wanted to make it to where they don't have to work the full day? Or get some kind of goggles, them plastic glasses, if they got, if they're outside doing stuff, they're gonna fall off. They're not that sturdy or...
There she is.
That's good. And, I mean, why pay him to just sit in the garage?
Or come in early and leave early.
I would say, I would say...
Because I'm closing at noon, so if they left at noon, that would be five and a half hours, so...
Yeah, if you guys wanna go home.
As long as there's nothing going on, no issues.
Right, I understand can, whether you guys wanna vote to pay them for those three and a half hours, or...
I think it's up to them as far as whether or not they want to work. I mean, I'd rather them work as far as on that side of it, so...
I thought I'd bring it up, so you guys could decide if you wanted to make them work the full day, if you wanted to give them part of the day off and pay them, 'cause I know a lot of places are closing and, so I just thought I'd bring it up.
It's everybody's flavor down that way.
I really have no opinion about that.
Yeah, I'm taking the day off, 'cause I am not gonna be on seventy.
I mean, they just, if they wanna work, that's fine.
If they wanna leave early.
Well, they're not, they're not going to not get paid, I already know that, they're not gonna leave early and not get paid for it. So, that's why I said I would bring it up. That's all I had, that's all that that was.
What do you guys think about paying them that, three hours, three and a half hours?
If they didn't come in early or over the other couple days, totally up to them.
Yeah.
Just make it up. Works for me.
Do we need to vote on that then?
No, they're gonna do comp time, they're gonna vote.
Works for me.
Back to the top, introduction of our new attorney.
Oh, this is your seat, right here.
Or you can sit down.
I mean, from, that's the, you'll have a nameplate when I get, when it gets, comes in. So, this is your, your official chair.
Okay.
Yeah, I know, it was a good night.
Mara, would you like to introduce yourself to the crowd?
Hi. I'm Mara Hoff, I am a partner at DeFeverran, we're based out of Muncie with offices in Newcastle, Lafayette, and Fishers. And I've been doing municipal law for about eighteen years, so I'm happy to join you here at Dutton City.
Glad to have you.
Thanks.
David's vacation days.
That's me too.
Okay, good.
His, with his baby coming up, he will get five vacation days on his anniversary date in August. Me and him was talking and I told him that it would, I could put it in the computer and put a note that they were giving to him early for, in cases, in case he needs them for when his baby is born. But then he would not get any more vacation days until his next anniversary date. So he, if he uses them all, he won't get any more until next year.
Of August.
On August, in August.
Are you good with that?
And then, if you got, or I can prorate what he's actually earned and put those on to that, so that way, if something happens and he's not here all the way up to August, he doesn't get paid for days that he hadn't actually earned yet. That's, you guys can discuss that and decide how you wanna do it.
When's baby due?
Uh, in May.
That's what I was thinking, you said May. So it's just June, July, and most of August, three months, that he would be missing his anniversary date.
I'm okay with that.
Find him in May.
You good with it, or?
What if he quits? What if he gets fired?
Didn't you say we'd prorate those then?
I think fired.
Well, no, I'm, no, I'm just, I'm throwing that out there because he shows up on payday on Thursday and then come Friday and he quits.
Right.
And he's already burned up all of his five days, so we paid him how much money and we can't recoup it.
So, if you want to do it to where I prorate him, he would just be, he would get three months' worth of PTO on his anniversary date.
I mean, I could sign something, say at least state to my anniversary date.
I'm just throwing it out there, I don't have a problem with you doing it on that side, I'm just bringing it to everybody.
I mean, I'm, however, however we wanna do it, I don't, it don't make no difference, mind me.
I would say, do you hold a paycheck? No.
No, we don't hold back a week.
Yeah, that, that would be, that would be, yes, that's the kicker. I mean, if we could get something wrote up that, if he happens to decide to quit, then ultimately if we terminate him, then he's done, we're not expecting it. But if he happens to quit, then he would have to repay that amount no matter where he's at. You good with that?
You.
So, need a motion?
I'll make a motion to write up contract to give David his vacation time early.
Okay, second?
Second, Dad.
All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, Wilson locked quote?
I made a couple copies, there's one there for you and Lori to look at.
Come on.
There's one, and then I gave Michael one. This is for, he came and looked at the door handle and he was able to tighten it up a little bit, but it's still loose. He can do one, that's like the one that's on there now, and it would've been under the limit and I could've had him go ahead and do it. But this is a heavy-duty doorknob for high usage, which we have. He said that's the reason that one is the way that it is now, because of how much volume of usage we have coming in and out of the door. And then, he can also take the guts out of that one, I don't know how else to say it.
The key, tell me the key.
And put it inside the new one, so that way we don't have to spend money on making extra keys to give to everybody and the same key will still do the back door and the front door like it does now. Because I know the guys have, I mean, I don't have any problems with it, but I know the guys have mentioned the, the key gives them trouble sometimes and the doorknob is still kinda loose, I don't know how hard it would be to break it off of there with as loose it is. But, so, I had, that's what Wilson wrote up for me when he came to see if he could tighten it. Which he didn't charge me for that, the service called to come and tighten it and look at it.
Same way?
I'm finally getting fixed, we're gonna change it out to heavier one-door.
How long's that one been on there? It's been on there for a minute.
I mean, before I was here. I had scout doors come out, they said it was more like a, like a closet type.
More like a residential.
Before I was here, and I'm going on eight years now, so...
I get a motion to go ahead and update the front door lock for Wilson?
I make a motion to go ahead and update the, the front door lock.
Second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Department reports, do you wanna start?
I'll, I'll finish it.
Okay. We'll go with the water department, monthly testing was done. He backwashed twenty-five thousand gallons this month, went to the BMV in Indianapolis for the water truck and the trailer. Lead, lead survey, finished distribution side. He needs to do the customer side and it'll be completed, chemicals needed for both plant and lagoons ordered and delivered. Ten eight-one-one tickets done. He went down to repair a line in the park bathrooms when Kyle and Dave went down to turn it on, they found a, a line out some point. Uh, three meters were fixed, leaks and broken parts, cleaned trucks. Sewer license exam unofficially passed, we'll need to talk about the town's plan for here upon now. Things he needs, project list, needs three meters slash pits, has three that need to be fixed and dug up and replaced. Fountain acres, needs a radio read still, three oh eight US twenty-seven, is that the one where you guys was at there next to Longfellow's?
No, that's two eleven.
Yeah.
I think, uh, three oh eight's the one, I think on the corner, kinda off, I think it's Davis.
It would be on this side.
Pit's like, under the driveway.
Okay.
Oh, that, that Lynch's old house?
I think so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And they've been somewhat driving over and that needs to be...
Yeah.
That's the one that just had that metal plate over it and then that dome that falls in, it's gonna break something.
Four oh six Davis, the pit needs dug up and replaced, looks like it's been ran over, it's collapsing, pictures are on Silversmith. Rob said the alarm for the skater system should be installed in about two weeks. He also sent a quote for battery backup for the lagoons, we'll go with that with the sewer. Antenna heads on radio reads, do we want to treat like septic lids, almost all that have trouble broadcasting and broken antennas? That's the little black thing on top, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, well results are on the back, well run, well won, continuously falling off. Had to put a quote together to get well won, well one running strong again. Quote from Phil, has to be done before valves can be fixed. And that is...
Seventeen six.
Seven.
Yeah, that's why he didn't go ahead with the other one, because of how much it is.
To where we can go, 'cause the wellhead needs to be taken care of.
Yeah, we need to get the wellhead done first.
Yep.
And they're the ones that have been maintaining and doing all the wellheads.
Right. And this is on the very back one, is that the report that they sent of what all was going on?
Yeah, yeah, well one, yes.
Well one. So...
And well one is our strongest one, biggest one, isn't it?
I believe so.
Yeah, right. And it's running the lowest.
Yeah. So, can we get, do I need, can I get a motion to go ahead and have Orpman, or if the money's there, for that?
Yeah, it's there.
To go ahead and get Orpmans in here to do that well, to fix it, or?
Make a motion for Orpmans to get well one, I think they're rebuilding it correctly, David.
Maybe they'll salvage what they can, but...
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, for Orpmans to go ahead and get well one repaired.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Looked around, knew that was coming, so...
Uh, we'll just go with the sewer report, discharged March fourth to the eighth. Total gallons discharged for February was two point eight three two million gallons. Took raw and final sample to Cambridge City for test. Chemicals are in lagoons, will begin to discharge first of April with them. Filled out flood plain training to receive certification, began some curb cleaning. With Kyle throughout the town, fixed curb along the circle of Century Drive. They removed a deer off of the, off of twenty-seven one day.
Yeah, finally.
Yeah, located sewer lines along twenty-seven for eight-one-one ticket, cleaned out lagoon shed, trying to keep it organized. Boat is secure in the equipment garage, battery backup at the lagoons. The quote for it came in about twenty...
About thirty thousand.
Thirty thousand dollars. We fixed damaged grass in front of the eatery, we had laid leaves, topsoil and seed. Kyle and him cleaned up limbs and debris off Raw Street. Purchased chemicals to keep the weeds down in lagoons. Cleaned out islands at the park, big sticks and tree trunks were removed and organized, but behind the equipment garage. Waste water test is scheduled for April eighteenth. Utilized downtime to study for upcoming water tests, wastewater tests, sorry. Plan of action to rebuild leaf box for the next fall. Quotes put together for new truck, neat amount of what we want to spend. The things he needed, the third truck, the dump truck needs serviced and at Speedy Pete's, needs to be gone through. Leaves are mulched if anyone needs topsoil. On the battery backup, that's, Mike and I were discussing that earlier and it's a little steep.
Yeah.
For that. What do you guys do now?
Well, I know, I think he said Ron got hit on it with idem and that, other than that, and a couple taller trees, what they called it, growing around the banks at the lagoons. But, they said we're supposed to have some sort of battery backup, there was a little battery hookup. Uh, how long that lasted, I don't know, but there wasn't any power, any way to charge the battery when it wasn't running. We've been, we've been talking with Doug, trying to find a, a lot cheaper solution.
Yeah.
But we just, like, the week we're discharging, in case, like, we're discharging with chemicals, in case the power goes out, something needs to be up there to...
The remedy, even, sorry, you know, even if you're discharging it, if the power goes out, like I said, pumps are gonna shut off, so the discharge is gonna stop.
But it's still, if the, if the pipe's open down here at HCR, it's still flowing in the river.
Yeah, I would say that, um, discard, charge during the days until we get backup.
Yeah, until we figure something else out.
'Cause I mean, I know you had, you had looked into solar on that side of it as far as on a backup and I think that the town should really look into as far as that area out there because all them pumps are ran off of one-ten as far as service out there and they could easily go green out there.
Just go where there is. If they go out, run an extension cord over the west side?
Yeah. I think that would be something to look into.
Yeah.
That would be probably half of what they're seeing.
Right.
That side of it, and if we could get it for half of that price and then actually pull all the meters that are out there and no electric is run to it and it's all green.
Yeah, the only, the only electric we run is the two little pumps and if the lights are on, that's, which we don't even turn the lights on when we're out there.
Who would be surprised how much the electric bill is for the...
Yeah, when them pumps are on, they're, they're pulling hard as far as on that side of it, so... And if we can, I can get with you as far as who I'm dealing with, as far as on a solar grid on that side of it to where...
A lot of people, what do I get to do green anyway?
Yeah, so I think that would be an incentive for the town to really look going that route, especially out that way. You know, on that side of it, then it would give us coverage all the time.
Right.
On that side of it.
What do you, what about this truck?
Give me another one to die, maybe two.
There's two in there.
Do we have a, um...
I'm pretty sure the Ford in the other stack is already sold.
What were we? We discussed the, mm-hmm, edit, right, for that, for the sewer department?
We hadn't really discussed it. I mean, you bring it up when you read his report, but you hadn't really discussed actually purchasing one.
As far as funds wise, what, that would be the...
I mean, you guys have, get the firm report every month. From doing the bankrupt, the, all three bank accounts are losing money little by little every month. They're not gaining anything because of stuff that's had to be bought that should've been taken care of for one, all the meters and everything else. But, and we're possibly, possibly going to have to, we don't know how much we're gonna have to pay to get the backhoe fixed or if it's gonna be fixed, or if we're gonna have to buy another one and...
We don't wanna talk about that.
We definitely have to have a backhoe.
Yeah.
Well, the backhoe, the last time we talked, in November, they were just waiting on a glass pole.
No, the pump's out to be replaced, the hydraulic pump is at Richmond Hydraulic and it, when I talked to them two weeks ago, when I called it, that they were out a month to get it in, so...
And if there's any internal damage, we can't get parts for it.
Do what?
If there isn't any, any internal damage that, we're gonna SOL.
If there is internal damage, we're, it's scrap.
There's huge, huge ones out there as far as that goes.
Yeah.
So, but why, why would that brought up as far as back in November? Because, like I said, it'd be back in, or...
Thank God.
Back in December, it was, the only thing we were waiting on was the glass part because it broke or something like that and then they would have it done.
I don't remember.
I'm almost positive that, the pump was one of the main things that it went down there for though, the hydraulic pumps. 'Cause that, that was the reason that they come up here and took it that day.
Yeah.
Oh, it was leaking, I know that.
Yeah, but that's, yeah, but the way I was understood, that if, if Richmond Hydraulic got the pump open and there was nothing major inside, it wouldn't be nothing, hardly anything, so...
Yeah, 'cause they, in the report, there was no bottle shaking, just farting on that side of it, isn't it, so...
Hopefully they can open it, find nothing.
I think we need to decide on how much we're gonna...
I think we need to...
This place is good.
I understand, but I think we need to hold for that until we find out what's going on with the backhoe, honestly. I mean, that's my opinion.
I agree.
'Cause that backhoe could cost us, I think, what was the first quote, six?
Is that something we look at, treating it if it does come back good, or we just gonna try to ride it out?
I don't know, probably have to ride it out for the time being. Unless you guys can find grants.
We're gonna start looking.
Uh, the street department opened the park bathrooms, sweeping streets when the weather's decent. Uh, going to a one-day class in Indy with the DNR, will be getting certified in NFIP, which is the National Flood Insurance Program. It is now allowed to be certified for the town, training has to be completed by July thirtieth. Uh, the training will be May fourteenth, nine AM to four, at the Division of Water in Indianapolis. Once the class is complete, they will send certificate. Uh, went and fixed Joyce McDonald's yard, regraded topsoil and seeded. Placed the road salt bed for this year, only requested twenty-five tons since we have some left from last year. The inspected the drains in the field on Davis Street, noticed a sinkhole and old exposed stormwater line. Contacted Indian Earthworks to come look at the issue, spoke with Zane, said they are waiting on a response from Lou. It is an east, I would say that's supposed to be easy fix, but they need to go through the proper channels. Uh, changed the flag on the flagpole at the park, fixed the faucet in the men's restroom at the park. And if no one has paid attention at the memorial at the park.
Yeah.
That has been completely torn apart and replaced and looking very nice.
I think I seen a lady over there taking pictures of it the other day when I was coming back from the bank.
Um, I heard through the grapevine that Mr. Webster poured over some money for that, so, I don't know for sure. Yeah, please. Police Department Services, three cases drawn, two active, ten for the year. Training, attended DT training.
What is that, dog training?
No.
Defense tactics.
Defense tactics.
Maybe I should stop using those.
You guys are spelling terms.
Spelling terms.
Uh, K nine training, working on phaser instructor recertification. Uh, April, they're gonna do firearms training with the county. Um, the Explorer's back, two new tires, the siren box and new speaker. Service was completed on the Dodge. Uh, the Explorer will need another, the other two tires replaced by the end of summer. Uh, the Dodge may need two tires by the end of the summer. Need more storage in the Dodge and Explorer, working on funding for deck draw system, which is sixteen hundred dollars and looking for options for the Explorer for in the back. Uh, working on coverage for the eclipse, Terrell's working Saturday and Sunday and possibly Monday, did you happen to talk to him today?
Yeah, he wasn't able to, he, 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 he wasn't, he...
They had to be.
Got sidetracked, little kindergartners were beating him up and...
He got beat up by a tent right now?
Yeah, every day, just about.
So he hasn't given us...
Yeah, he was, he's going to tomorrow and try and talk to him to see what he has to do.
'Cause I knew there's something about, they weren't going necessarily meeting here, here, feeling, they were talking about high school and then...
Possibly something, but yeah, yeah.
Maybe they will meet in the high school, so...
He had a hefty stay today.
Just because of the buck, I'm out, I'm sorry.
Um, the county is split into four zones and we'll have officers in the area. State police is only handling interstate on Monday.
Great. What are you guys doing?
Us? Nothing? Man right there.
Danny was making ice cream.
Uh, had a meeting with the Fountain City group about events, we'll need access to Bearcage, which I believe you've already talked to Kyle about that.
I think we've already got that arranged.
Uh, cemetery will be closed for the weekend and the park bathrooms will be closed after the five gate run on Sunday.
We'll be closing the park too, 'cause if we don't, I have, we'll have people camping there overnight.
Alright.
Hey.
You're actually gonna use the gate?
Money, money, money.
So that gate across.
Close it, close it.
They want camp, we charging. Uh, sent out numerous letters for donations for equipment, received a donation for twenty-five hundred dollars from Wetzel's. Is that these back twenty-seven pages here?
Twenty-seven pages.
That's the...
The timesheets?
Timesheets.
Yeah.
Is that all it was on yours?
Yep, that's it.
Okay.
As far as on that side of it, anybody that wants to ask, all hours are accounted for, so, on all employees.
You sir?
Okay.
Fire chief?
Yep, uh, for the folks of you that don't know me, I think everybody here does, I'm Wes Roberts.
Mara, fire chief.
Hi.
Good evening. So, um, this has been brought up some time ago, um, the parking back here on Mill Street. Um, there's some trouble, I, I wouldn't say necessarily trouble, uh, but getting the fire trucks to go out and to the east and then out into the west, we're having some issues. Uh, the issue spot is right behind the firehouse, um, and if, this is Indiana Code Title nine, twenty-one, sixteen, dash, five. Uh, if you look at line item number seven, uh, it says within thirty feet upon approaching, upon the approach, I'm sorry, to any flashing beacon, stop sign, or traffic control signal located at the side of the roadway. So any stop sign in town, you're not supposed to park any closer than thirty feet to that stop sign, uh, in all directions. So at that intersection, thirty feet, uh, all the way around. Uh, number ten is within twenty feet of the driveway entrance to a fire station and on the side of the street adjacent, uh, or opposite of the entrance of the fire station. So right back here is the, of the issue, uh, there is some streetside parking on the north side. Uh, so technically between the concrete to concrete, that's our approach to this building. So twenty feet past that on each side should be deemed no parking on the street. The other bad intersection is right down here at Vine and Mill. Um, like literally, there's a car parked at the stop sign and across, there's just a whole row of cars, like, it's, if you're not careful taking the fire engine that way, you're, you're gonna rub the pole or peel somebody's front fender off, so...
That's just like the house across the street from me, they park right at the stop sign.
Yeah, so any intersection in town should be thirty feet, uh, according to the Indiana Code.
Been breaking that up for five years and.
This is, uh, this is not a Fountain City Town Ordinance, this is a state statute that is enforceable by tickets, am I correct?
Yes.
Um, once it's, uh, properly marked. So the streets, the, at each intersection will need to be painted with the yellow no paint, no parking paint or whatever. I know that Main Street before it was chipping seal or slurry coded the last time or whatever, um. The entire front over here, uh, in front of, I'm sorry, I get rid of that address. Uh, anyway, um, Mary Lou's old place, it, it had no parking across the street out there.
Shane Schreier did it.
And that was then.
In sixteen.
That one James was at your.
Few moons ago.
Yeah, it was in sixteen.
So it hasn't been painted since and now we have new residents over there since the house has been sold, they, I'm sure they're unaware.
I, I spoke to them last week, told them that we'd be through to paint them soon.
Um, no, no harm, no foul on their part, it's a little wider out front than it is out back, obviously. Um, I'm just basically asking the town if, if they've got the paint to paint the intersections, uh, and, and the. However many feet that is, twenty feet on each side of the concrete back here and then out front. It's for the no parking, so we'll get these fire trucks out of here if we need to in an emergency situation. That's, that's where I'm at, just wanna bring you the justifiable proof that, that this is not just a city ordinance. Um, so that, you know, if they don't do it, you can, for anyone in town, uh, you can actually give them a ticket or a citation, so.
And it has to be so many days after it's properly marked, correct, Eric?
Sixty, I believe, is that correct?
Sixty days. I would recommend creating an ordinance too to go along with it.
Yeah.
Shane, Mara said the street opposite of the fire station, you don't have to get the signs like you got out front.
The, the no parking sign?
Number ten, the improperly signed posted down here.
Would they need to be?
Think it's number ten?
Right.
Yeah.
Would they need to be like some fire truck crossing signs?
They have ones out here on Main Street that it's a big yellow sign that has a fire truck, a picture of a fire truck on it.
Ah, I think that's just like fire department cross, like, you know, like, I think, I think it would need to say no parking.
No parking.
Fire lane, no parking.
There's probably regulations in the M U T C D, but I don't know what they.
I don't know if that deems a fire lane per se, I just maybe just be no parking.
Properly marked and stuff like that, cause I can tell you right now, if I write somebody a ticket and I go into. The, the courts and they're gonna look at it and the, they, pictures are produced and they see that they're not properly. Looked around.
Yeah.
That's just my experience.
And I'm not, I'm not asking, I'm not trying to get people to get ticketed, that's not the point here at all. The point is, we just need to be able to get trucks out of here in an emergency situation without damaging the trucks or someone else's personal property. Um, and obviously it's more than just, just Mill and Vine, uh, streets. I mean, I think there's obviously some other issues in town with people parking right at the stop sign, which is somewhat dangerous if you're in a small car. You won't be able to get out far enough to see without. Could, could potentially be an accident.
There again, like on the ones you was talking about, there is no curves, so are you gonna mark it?
Paint streets.
Cause there's.
Where is that?
Is it open here? Is the street's painted right here?
Literally, you could paint eight, six, eight inches, like a, like a curve paint, you know, just.
Right in front of you.
You don't have to paint the actual curb if there's no.
Well, but I mean, right here on the ends of pavement, well.
Six inches on the pavement was.
All, all the curves used to be painted yellow.
Right, but I mean, there's no curb there.
Now, the top part of it's still, and the street's flush with it, on that side of it.
Shoot, when Chase was here, he painted the street after there wasn't a curb.
So I, I just.
Yeah, the last time Chase was over street was how many years ago?
Yeah, I know.
Right, and, and I actually said something to Kyle last week.
Mm-hmm.
One day about finding, figuring out the spray here to make sure that it worked.
Well, does the town have the paint? Do, does, do they have yellow paint?
I think we got the five gallon jugs of it back here.
Yeah.
If not, the street department can have, has money to buy some paint.
Well, they end up.
I mean, it's been a long time since they, we bought paint.
Yeah, and I'm not, I'm not opposed to actually making that a, uh, uh. Multi-department, you know.
Well, how about you find out what signs you, you need to have, what signs you need to add and you get the signage.
Yeah, that's fine, but I mean, as far as like getting it done, uh, if they need some help getting it done, cause that's a lot of intersections if you're gonna do all of them like they're supposed to be. You can't do partial and not do the rest, you gotta, gotta go, it's either all or nothing.
Right.
So.
So as of right now, I mean, as far as the residents, cause that's, they're limited on parking, so I would like to at least be able to hold off till next month to give them an opportunity to come in here and speak. On that side of it, because.
I, I understand that.
Department has expanded, the fire department has changed on that side of it, so now.
Everybody back here has off, off-street parking though. No one back here other than Abel, I think is the only one that doesn't have on, or, uh, off-street parking, so. All three houses back here.
Having enough space as far as that goes, because.
There's, there's enough to get at least two vehicles, so.
When they bought the house, they bought the house with street parking on that side of it and now. Cause have you had any accidents as far as getting out?
No, but I don't want any accidents.
Right, no, I.
I know, like I said, I know that was brought up and that's been probably a year or two years ago, I don't know, in regard, in.
I know it was last year.
About the parking in the back, back here, and they told us that we need to take better driver's training, that has nothing to do with the, the parking. Um, and that, right down here is really bad.
Well, that, that.
That, that's absolutely horrible, um.
Yeah, but the thing is though, I mean. If, Rob's the bad, if you're gonna make this no parking back here, then that church down there on the corner should not be allowed to block the right-hand side of the road either. Whenever, right there at that little church, nine acres.
Oh, the old.
They, you know, the town has allowed them to block off that side of it whenever they're using it, so that needs a stop.
The little brick place down there?
Yeah, yeah, that guy pulls up, bar dogs that rode.
Yeah.
He shouldn't be able to, I mean, if it's, it's only parking on one side of the street back here.
Yeah, yeah.
So if he's blocking it, then he shouldn't be doing it.
Chris has that big duly, when he pulls up in front of the church, you can't get around him.
Yeah.
Hope, hope we don't have to go out that way if there's an emergency, you, you see what I'm saying? Like that, that's, that's where I'm at.
He would stop doing it.
Trying to give people tickets or, uh, upset people, it literally is just being able to get out of here if we had to, may never have to have that, but. There's been three times now that I've went west and have a tough time getting around that corner on an emergency call, um.
Well, I can't get my car around the corner sometimes.
Also spoke with the school, um, over here in regards to the traffic at pickup and drop-off is ungodly in the front and back. Uh, I've got pictures out front where they're lined up past the driveway to the firehouse, so literally bumper to bumper, so if we had an emergency. They're gonna have to move, cause I wouldn't even be able to get my personal truck in to get to the fire truck, so.
I've had the school put out, uh, whatever notices to the parents about blocking that drive and stuff like that.
Again, it may never happen, but if, if, if it's that one time that it does, I don't want it to be negligence on our part. As the fire department or the town, uh, for not doing our due diligence and making sure that we can get out. Same way with getting an accident back here.
Right.
Uh, if we peel off somebody's front fender or crash one in the car. Somebody's gonna be pointing fingers at everybody, not just the fire department, it'd be the town too, so. Just wanna make sure everybody's rear end is covered, that's, that's, and again, I'll gladly make a work detail and help. The town guys get. The corners painted where they need to be painted and the stripes on the street and signs posted and I don't have any problem doing that. We've got twenty-some members, so we can. We can make that happen.
I still recommend that we, right there. Remind, look at our old parking ordinances, make them go hand in hand with this, with the state statute. Then if I have to do, we'll start with the ordinance. Then we'll go state statute.
Didn't we just redo one that about working?
I, no. I think I gave you.
Or was it just, it's some, something that fell under that.
I've never seen it.
I mean, I've been asked for.
All day, unfortunately.
Nah, this would be one that was either Austin or Gabriel.
Because I can't get it from her.
It would be in the, my ordinance that I have put together in my cabinet.
I mean, that's. No, that's the opiate.
Well, that's the opioid, opiate.
Yeah.
Unrestricted and restricted. With that being, Mara, with that being a state statue, should we have to write a, a town ordinance also?
You can do either, but I'm gonna defer to your public safety as to whether they would prefer to issue an ordinance violation.
Versus a state statue violation?
Sounds like an.
And, and I mean, Karen.
I talked about that earlier, so.
Experience is you start with, I would say start with an ordinance. If you don't get your point across with the ordinance, then we'll sign them in the state statute.
It still needs to be properly marked, though.
Yes.
Everything will have to be properly marked. Uh, again, I'm not, not here trying to get somebody a ticket or a, a violation of any kind, this is just, again, protecting. Our assets and the town's assets all at the same time.
Just keep in mind too, that if something has been created by the town, like an ordinance or a new thing meaning state statute, it's sixty days before it can be enforced. I believe.
If it has a fine in it, it'll have to be published, sixty sounds right.
I get sixty days, you gotta give everybody time to get used to it. I can still go up and say, hey, you can't do this, after this time, you'll be subject to incited. And go that or out, just for anything like that front, that's been there for years, just hasn't been painted, so. And stuff like that, but like.
Now, as far as that goes, do you still have to go thirty feet that way too?
Out front?
Is the way you talked about, yeah.
Both directions.
All of Cecil's, all of them working in the front.
Cecil, Cecil, not start parking out back anymore. Or in the side yard, like the car is in the side yard now.
Pull right in.
Yeah, right.
Pull right in next to your porch.
Yeah, he does that too.
It's like that right now?
No.
So do you wanna create an, an ordinance also?
I'll get with her on this.
Anything else?
Nope, they just need to, someone, I guess they can let me know whether they want assistance and doing that or whatever. Regardless, it, it still needs to be done, um, the painting anyway.
I think the paint, Kyle was saying that it has to be above seventy?
It's gotta be, yeah, at least seventy.
Before the, the paint will.
And a lot of amount of dry time before rain, I'm sure.
Right.
Yeah.
And they need, I don't mean, they really need to be cleaned really well, so.
We got a big truck with a hose, we can get them cleaned.
We can.
Power wash, then curbs.
They'll be, they'll be quickly cleaned.
I think we got three of them, four of them.
For work detail.
Visitors, Paul, do you have anything? You young lady, no, you, no, you, no.
Party's hooking.
With the walker wanting me to hit on the antenna heads.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
If, if we're gonna start treating them like septic lids, like.
As far as them damaging them and.
Right.
Charging them for them.
I think he said that we're up to like thirteen now that.
How much are those?
They're like thirty bucks apiece.
Yeah.
I would say if we're good.
Are those in the pit themselves?
No, they're on top of the lid.
Okay.
Yeah, they sit on top of the lid.
Septic lid?
No, the antennas.
Meter pit.
Water meter.
They're like the little black circles, probably three.
Cause the way it's set up now.
Say if you damage a septic tank lid, you have to pay for it yourself, the homeowner does, if they damage it. They get the, they get an invoice for it, so they're saying that they need to treat those antennas the same as the septic lids.
It's not even.
If the homeowner.
My pit's not even in my yard, so. I don't think it works that.
I think so, I think we should pass it, that, that costs a lot, if they, if somebody damages it, then, and it quits working.
I agree.
I mean, I've got one in my yard, so I'd pay for it if I hit it with the mower or whatever, it's here.
So.
You will make an ordinance for that?
Do you, they want, you want them to vote on whether they wanna do that or not, or do they not need to vote?
No, not until you get.
They should vote once they.
You gotta get an ordinance.
Sprint them.
Yeah, yeah.
What else was there?
I, I had two things I was gonna bring up, but I can't remember. Oh, I got a phone call on one, um, just a reminder to the guys that they have thirty minutes on lunch. I got a couple of phone calls, they're passing along at this point on that side of. And as of right now, they don't clock out on that side of it, it's all just based on fate, so. And there was something else, but I can't remember what it was. I forgot my list.
Didn't that say you're gonna get you? Huh?
What?
Yeah.
What was that?
The, just reminding the guys they got thirty minutes for lunch. Um, that's it, uh, can I get a motion to include, approve claims and payments?
I make a motion to approve claims and payments.
Second?
Yeah, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Yeah.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.